And so it was in relation to the disruptive student policy, which is P fifty-five sixty. And it was second paragraph, and there were three subjective criteria and one that was actually qualitative or quantitative evidence-based. And there was, there is a statement in that policy that refers to P fifty-six hundred, which is the code of conduct. That sentence specifically is disruptive students may be disciplined in accordance with that policy. So it's not indicative to me that the definition of a disruptive student is in the code of conduct. It's that how if a student is deemed to be disruptive, they are disciplined in accordance with the code of conduct. So to me, the purpose of the disruptive student policy is to define what a disruptive student is. So my ask is in that second paragraph, take another look at it, really ask yourselves, is this too subjective? Alright, so like the very first one, for example, is for the purposes of the policy, disruptive student means that a student with difficulty establishing good relationships with peers. I don't know what that means, right? If I'm sitting in a very introverted student, then does that mean I'm disruptive? Alright, so it's those kinds of things there that don't quite make sense to me. So I'd appreciate if maybe that language would be fine-tuned and make better sense. And the other one was the budget, and that was really two questions. It was why was community input stricken from the policy? And why is it appeared to be the opinion of the board that their most important job, that statement is also stricken funding the budget policy? You know, the most important thing we do is to have a budget or formulate a budget. And thank you.
Maria Wright, Raritan Township, mental health programs are proven to help students. Thoughts and prayers are not proven to help. Thank you.
Good evening, Janet Quartero in Flemington Borough. As a member of this community, I follow what this board does because I care. Success for a community begins on this local level. Success for a community begins with its young people. They need our support, they need all the support you can give them. So I, like many, take the time to support and follow school board members, knowing how difficult the job is, and hoping that they will be worthy of our trust. That word trust has been claimed by members of this board. It has been spoken by many people coming to this podium. Earlier, Vernon Williams reminded us that trust is one aspiration outlined in your mission. So we vote, we put our trust in those board members, and we trust that they are there as public servants, committed to the support and success of every child. Trust is earned, and when board members break our trust, we notice. And more importantly, when board members break our trust, they also let down our kids and their teachers. I respectfully ask why do the majority of this board attempt to deny significant professional development training to Hunter and Central's teachers? This training was sponsored by the College of New Jersey. The Teachers as Scholars Program was already paid for, so the board was not acting as a good steward of the budget. Rather, it pains me to say it seemed that they sought to control teachers' ongoing growth, and I do not believe that that is in the board's job description. I just heard, though, that powerful learning is a part of your mission statement. Much, but perhaps still not enough, has been said of late about the loss of mental health services like Care Plus. I heard the statement read at the top of the meeting. I also heard the report that there was a recommendation to continue Care Plus, but it did not receive sufficient support on the board. And the gap that that leaves currently for students' needs that many need today is more than troubling. I heard the plan to hire an internal counseling support that will result in robust program as determined, I assume, by experts in the field. I certainly hope that this will remain a time-sensitive topmost priority, because folks, of course, will follow your progress on that here. I'm certainly encouraged to hear it suggested that board members are aware of the myriad stresses and challenges in being a high school student, and I hope of how many students have been saved by mental health resources in school. I might reasonably argue that that awareness should be in the board's job description. I want to thank you for your service and support the courageous currently minority voices on this board. I and many will seek to support, to support school board candidates this November that are honestly committed to the welfare of all students and their teachers. And I would ask the currently majority voices on this board to please stop and consider moving forward how they can actually be worthy of our trust. Thank you.
I'm going to do something, I think, that might be a little bit unusual and comment on two things that happened here tonight that disturbed me. One was your member Gong's request that the attorney make available to her. And as I understand it, your attorney serves all of the members of the board. And so there should be transparency about any legal discussion or legal advice that is given by that attorney. All members should receive reports from your attorney. And I greatly support your request for that. I don't see any other way that there can be equality among the board members as there should be in communications, especially legal communications. The other comment on tonight that I'd like to make is the gentleman who raised the concern about discipline and the fact that there were three subjective items and only one that had, was evidence-based, that had to do with student discipline. I believe that the response to that was, oh, well, we have a code of conduct, it's clear. Then I would say, refer to the code of conduct. Don't have two different standards sitting out there. All you do is you create conflict. So I would really encourage that you make that change in that section of, I don't know, was it a policy? Was it a goal? Was it a what? But if you've got a code of conduct, use the code of conduct, don't have something else. The other thing has been that I would like to comment, and it's said been more eloquent than said especially by the gentleman who talked before me. But it makes no sense to me whatsoever that you had a budget that was passed, considered, based on, how many years? At least three, right? Two, three? Years of providing mental health services? Well, you think there's something better? Fine, fine, find it, bring better. But you don't bring better by throwing out what was working. It, it, it boggles my mind that you would have a budget that provided for these needs of these students, and then all of a sudden you throw it out?
Thank you, your time's up.
I would like to discuss some issue regarding the ethical obligations of board members. On March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Mary Ann Rampula made a public allegation against a sitting board member. In response to Ms. Rampula's allegation, the board engaged in a campaign to discredit and remove a board member who was overwhelmingly elected by the voters of Raritan Township, Mrs. Peterson. Also in March of twenty twenty-three, I made an allegation against then-board member Noel O'Donnell. In response, the board did nothing, or so I thought. That April, the board passed a resolution censoring Mrs. Peterson and sought to have her removed from the board based, based upon their own false allegations. At that same meeting, Ms. O'Donnell made a tepid apology for her own behavior. Thanks to a recent Oprah request, which has been made, the board's public legal bills public. We now know that the board used our district resources to pay the previous board attorney to write Ms. O'Donnell's quote-unquote apology statement. This was at the same time that that same attorney was writing censures of Mrs. Peterson. That is a gross abuse of power. As some of you might remember, in twenty twenty-three, Ms. Kellogg was the vice president of the board that engaged in this abuse of power. She has continued to make it her mission to try to discredit Mrs. Peterson and devalue the transparent work of the board. She should remember the saying, "People in glass houses should not throw stones." In December of twenty twenty-four, I filed an ethics complaint against Ms. Kellogg with the School Ethics Commission. Unlike the former board, I respected the request of the School Ethics Commission and kept the complaint confidential until the commission made the finding. On September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, just six days ago, the Ethics Commission found that there are sufficient facts presented in my complaint and Ms. Kellogg's written response to lead a reasonable person to believe that Ms. Kellogg violated the School Ethics Act. That complaint will now move to adjudication. Ms. Kellogg is being defended by the same attorney who prosecuted Mrs. Peterson and protected Ms. O'Donnell. Ms. Kellogg is the first board member in Hunter and Central history to have an ethics case credited with probable cause. Rather than change the manner in which she conducts herself since I filed this complaint, Ms. Kellogg has continued to flout her ethical obligations. I am certain we will not hear complaints from Ms. Rampula about the amount of money Ms. Kellogg's ethics defense is costing the district. And we won't see the letters to the editor calling out Ms. Kellogg's behavior. Apparently, Ms. Rampula, Ms. Kellogg, and their friends only hold others to standards and never themselves. Thank you.
Witnessing the community's behavior at last month's BOE morning was, meeting was disappointing, to say the least. People were out of control, making accusations, yelling over the board attorney, and calling people names. Where is the respect for differing viewpoints? Some of the worst behavior I saw was from people looking to gain a seat on this board. Mrs. Wallace has been seen in the video interrupting the board attorney and yelling from the audience, forcing the board to have to take a recess due to the loss of decorum. Another candidate, Mr. Williams, alleged he was shocked that the board member did not know that Care Plus was in the budget. He found it reprehensible, a word he uses against members of the board. Ms. Kellogg made a similar claim on Facebook. However, when a member of the public asked Ms. Kellogg, "Where is the budget presentation for Care Plus?" information can be found, she never responded. I looked at the budget, budget presentation for myself, I didn't see mention of Care Plus. People should not make baseline claims that can't be backed up. Also, I recently saw a letter to the editor of Tap Into, written by Mrs. Rampula. Mrs. Rampula was sitting on the Board of Elections, served as a campaign manager for a board member, Sandra Gong, which wreaked a conflict of interest. Ms. Rampula has apparently moved on from Ms. Gong to be official campaign treasurer for Mrs. Wallace, Vernon Williams, and Nikki Price. Like Mrs. Rampula, the Wallace, Williams, and Bryce campaign likes to focus on legal bills. What is clear from the legal records and from previous decisions of the School Ethics Commission is that Ms. Kellogg and the previous board acted beyond what a board is allowed to do. Additionally, it is clear that the former board attorney worked with Ms. Kellogg and only certain board members against Mrs. Peterson, while actively defending other board members. It seems that some people on the board and others who frequent these meetings are not actually here seeking to prove good faith input. Instead, their focus appears to be trying to publicly humiliate board members that they have marked as the enemy. They will feed lies to the media and do their best to cause disruption. They are trying to disguise the fact that the Oprah legal bills are a window into how our previous board weaponized and abused their power and used district resources to try to silence a board member. The fact that these current candidates and their treasury continue to rely on this style of abuse to support their campaign is beyond disturbing. It is this kind of people, is this the kind of people we want on the board representing us? I hope, I hope not. Thank you.
It's Ms. Wallace, thank you. Today, at work, I couldn't believe the conversation I was having. We're a laughing stock. I'd like to talk about professional development and the courses available to these teachers. Mrs. Santangelo was absolutely correct that they can still attend. They will just not be reimbursed, and they have to use a personal day. So that's very different than being able to attend, because that would also be unconstitutional. The fact that I'm even talking about a class over the Salem witch trial that took place in sixteen ninety-two in twenty twenty-five is mind-boggling. Things can be presented as fact, and it's an evidence-based class. It happened, it happened in our history, and everybody acknowledges it. Whether or not you believe in witchcraft and magical thinking, that's during your time, not on professional development in a public school. This is a public school. We don't have time for a theocracy or plutocracy or anything that we're, the board is slowly coming to. And the fact that we are still talking about something that the governor of Massachusetts in seventeen eleven exonerated twenty-two people of not having witchcraft at all. And this seminar, you know what it's, that we'd probably end up teaching? The mob mentality, how that's not okay, how not to believe everything you hear, how to handle different points of view, how to handle women in power. I, I, I'm just, it's mind-boggling that anyone in twenty twenty-five has issue with that, unless it's personal, unless it's your theological viewpoint on witchcraft, which I find offensive in public education. I do not profess my beliefs on anyone in this room, in this board, in this town, and I'm not on that board. So this is ridiculous that we're still talking about this. The other thing I'd like to address is that previous speaker who then said that myself, Reverend Williams, and Nikki Price do not deserve a seat on this board is, I think that's out of line. They officially campaigned on board time and in the public where it is banned from this school. And the fact that you, what, Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, did not shut that down is really out of line, because isn't that what you're there for? That's it. Enjoy it right home while you get paid for it.
My name is Alexander Rupp, Tewksbury Township, but I, I teach here at the school. I've been thinking a lot about a rhythm. What gets bigger, the more that you take away from it, and I'll answer that. But pretty early in my teaching career, at least, never a good time to have this happen, so you let me be clear, but it was too early for me. I lost two students to suicide in short succession. And it was after that that we started to input more and more of these programs, including the ones that were stripped. And one of my students I consigned, we had consigned to Ash and the other to the Dirt. And the one that we consigned to the Dirt, their parents told me, and a colleague of mine, Gail Andrew, and I, about the time we bought him. And it was a beautiful statement, but it's a hell of a weight to put on him. Because it leaves you going, what could I have done more? What could I have done more? And that's not a rational thought, but it's a really human moment. And these healthcare initiatives that we added, they helped, I've seen them help. And now we removed two? Now we removed two? And we can give all the jargon and codes we want, but plain language, I like that better. If it's not broken, don't fix it, and Care Plus wasn't broken. We could have kept it, and we could have added these positions that they want to bring in, and that would have made us even stronger, but instead we took away two with the promise of adding one. That one's not even added yet. And that brings me, because we built one, we added, we gave more, and we gave more, but that brings me to what happens. What gets bigger, the more you take away from it? A hole. And you have made a hole. And if a child falls through that hole, will we strive to fill it? Or we'll know some people who could have done better. Thank you.
Kristen Scott from Delaware Township. I moved here several years ago, and this is the first time I've attended a school board meeting here. I'm a little concerned seeing the behavior that is being displayed by the board members. So that is my thing number one. Thing number two, I'm going to reiterate what past people have said with regards to the mental health services being removed. I can tell you, I have four children who, who I have been putting through schools. One will be graduating this year. They have developed such a significant mental health need that we are going, we are appropriately seeing outside services. But what happens when those services need to occur within the school day? My child has a need where it seems as if they developed a seizure disorder as a result. It's not, it's a mental health need. So when he needs to have the services to keep acting within the school day, it's something that is lacking within here. That is point number one. Point number two within this, I, I not heard anyone bring up concerns about the transportation piece. In Delaware Township, when we moved, our, our bus time was starting at six forty, which is pretty early, but oh, well. Now it's at six twenty, and that particular child, because of their disabilities, cannot function to get out the door at that timeframe. When I called to inquire why there was a difference, I was told that there was a disagreement within some services and a discrepancy between the transportation services. I'm asking and imploring that you look into how to fix this, so that way those services can be taken care of. My last thing, I thank you guys for hosting students who are international and exchange students. My family has hosted two students, we are at our second student. But we've had a difficult time navigating this year. One of the suggestions that I'm asking is coming from my sister, who also lives in a different area, but had people who had exchange students within their district. Last year, my child, who we had, had wanted to go through a graduation process, it's not something that he would have received where he had come to school and we were told no. So I understand that you're looking at graduation rates and whatnot, but where my sister goes, the kids are put in whatever grade, and they're allowed to do the senior activities and the different fun things that seniors do, just because it's something that our kids won't be able to experience. So I'm asking if that's something that you guys can do. And with that, I will share as quickly as I can the experience we've had this year. So, okay.
Anything anyone wants to recommend to put in a committee?
I just want, I was gonna say this is a positive comment, so bear with me. There has been quite a bit of newspaper coverage about Flemington Raritan and how much federal funding they have lost. And I just want to really appreciate Heather and her staff, because the amount of federal funding that, that Hunter and Central's lost is almost negligible. And I think that that's really, just huge kudos to you guys and the job that you do and the attention to detail that you have. So thank you very, very much.
Does anyone want to see anything added to the committee for next month?
The board member is no longer even suing those she thinks wronged her. But the most important thing here is the money, the cost of this lawsuit. It is costing the taxpayers in this audience and the parents of Hunter and Central School District tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars so far, eventually, when all is said and done. Just as here at Bythet Sol, a seventy-five thousand to one hundred twenty-five thousand a year increase in legal expenses for the board. It's rumored that the board member has already rejected an offer from the board of eighty-five thousand dollars to make this all go away. Who can tell what the final number might be if the board member prevails? Meanwhile, and this is even more important, at the last board meeting, although it wasn't brought up by the president today, at the last board meeting, it was voted to discontinue mental health care for the school's students, which is indefensible in any case. But the board members who voted to end the program explicitly at that board meeting justified their opposition citing budgetary concerns. Parenthetically, there were no budgetary issues because the program had already been budgeted and funded. But in addition, all those who voted against had voted for just a year earlier. So if money really is the issue, and there are doubts about that, but if money really is, I implore the board member who's suing the board to please just draw-
I'm not familiar with the board members' professional backgrounds. I don't know if, but I don't know any counselor who would have voted to cut Care Plus and school-based youth services with ten days going into, like, before the school year starting. And I heard what you said about posting a position and all that other kind of stuff. I don't know, again, if you know anything about caseloads or how many people can be served by one counselor in the course of a short day. I don't know if the person you're bringing in can offer after-hours support. But even right off the bat, you're talking about one counselor replacing two full-time counselors and replacing an outsourced service? That was an umbrella where you could get psychiatrists, psychologists, whatever else you needed for medical clearances and things like that, all probably for the cost of, like, three positions. Just for the Care Plus part, that's not even the two full-time counselors, who, I guess, we wouldn't have been paying medical benefits for, paid time off, all that other kind of stuff. So again, the math doesn't make sense. But anyway, the decision doesn't align with social work values or the code of ethics. As a licensed social worker who's worked in local nonprofits, I know students in our community struggle with substance use, refusal skills, unrest at home, bullying, self-harm, and suicidal ideation. This is in addition to social and academic pressures that they face. Many community agencies and private practices have long waiting lists and limited capacity. And our nonprofit agencies are also facing potential federal cuts. Our community cannot afford to decrease services that are often the only accessible resource left for Hunter and Central students. By eliminating these programs, despite public outcry, the recommendations from mental health professionals, teachers, the superintendent, you're showing the students and the community that their needs are not a priority for this board of education. High school students today face unprecedented stress, anxiety, depression, all the things. Teachers and administrators and in-house counselors, while they're deeply dedicated, cannot replace the specialized care that these programs provide. You've cut off two critical lifelines. Your decision will undoubtedly increase the risk of absenteeism, academic decline, social withdrawal, student harm, and long-term struggles that follow students into adulthood. Protecting student well-being must remain a top priority. It is not a matter of if harm will occur from the loss of these programs, but a matter of when. I urge you to show your commitment to the welfare of our community, reinstate these vital services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and commit to expanding, not reducing, mental health resources for our students. Thank you for your time.
I've seen a change in board members as terms expire and new members are elected. I've seen changes in board leadership as the board president and board vice president are chosen at the annual reorganization meeting. And I've seen a change in superintendent after Dr. Moore resigned and Ms. Cantalosi-Hade was hired. This year in particular, I am incredibly alarmed about what I'm seeing in terms of some board actions, behaviors, and decisions. Board members have been silenced at the table. If a board member tries to ask a question, they are interrupted and told to send an email or bring it up in committee, both of which are not public. The board comment section has been removed from meeting agendas, so now there's much less public discourse. Despite public outcry, the board majority seems to vote how they intended to all along, oftentimes against public opinion. Policy twenty-one-ten, the philosophy of Hunter and Central Regional High School, was revised to strip away all language describing how to fulfill the school's mission and all language regarding the philosophy itself. The only sentence that remains in policy twenty-one-ten in addition to the mission is, "It is the expectation of this school district that all pupils achieve the New Jersey student learning standards at all grade levels." This is so underwhelming and disappointing. Where we used to be high achieving and high quality, we now seem to be settling for average. This is not what I was looking for when we chose this school district in twenty twelve. We cannot expect students to achieve academic excellence and increase test scores if we are not considering the overall wellness of the whole child. Your decision ten days before school started to not renew the Care Plus contract against the recommendation of the superintendent was shortsighted, fiscally irresponsible, opens the district to lie- opens the district to liability, and could lead to devastating harm to students. You are restricting intellectual freedom-
That's why I said executive session, because I think when you say something like that in the public, it could damage the board.
Excuse me, it shouldn't have been said. It shouldn't have been said. It shouldn't. There was no-
Oh, basis? And it shouldn't have been said? The lawyer should have stopped it. It shouldn't have happened. Okay, okay, okay. But, uh, anyway, on the district goals, yes, I agree with the public in that it should be a given that students have access to all of the bathrooms throughout the day. They don't. They have not for years. If you go back to twenty-twenty-three, when Edward Brandt did, Principal Brandt did the thorns and flowers presentation about the feedback he got from the students interviewed during, uh, the climate culture survey, access to bathrooms was something that was on there then. It's been on there. It was the most frequently discussed thing in the student responses to the climate culture survey. We heard from students that they are having medical issues due to not being able to use the bathroom. So I know it's an odd goal to have to have, but at some point, we have students who are afraid to go to the bathroom or who can't use it because it's always locked or because there's not enough teachers there being there to help, you know, to leave it open for them. That becomes a basic necessity that I do think we have to address. So I know it might sound kind of like a silly goal. I hope, you know, that the students can appreciate, we're actually being responsive to that need that has been talked about year after year after year, because it really does need to be addressed. Um, there's a lot of information here and I appreciate the community feedback, the staff feedback, and the student feedback. And these schools are really responsive to a lot of those things that we've heard the most. And I think it's really demoralizing if you ask for feedback and don't address it. So these are some of the biggest things that the community, both inside and outside of the school, have been telling us that they need. And so, um, working with the administration to come up with some of these, some of the responses weren't feasible, some of the things had to change on the fly. But, um, and yeah, we can't cover every single goal and every single item, but these are really, um, addressing some of the issues that, you know, triage. You know, there are some things that really have to be said and-
At what our board policy is. And it specifically says that the committee shall be provided with a list of functions and duties. And then the committee may make recommendations to the board for action, but they may not act for the board. So then I went back to our handbook and looked to see what the Student Life and Program Committee is supposed to be doing. And it says it reviews initiatives and status and recommends policy and action related to curriculum, extra and co-curricular activities, as well as professional growth and development, specialty counseling services, community partnerships, and all of the matters as they relate to the educational mission and goals of the district. So I guess what I would like to know is, when did our Student Life and Program Committee get the power to decide what continuing education the teachers are allowed to access? Um, and then when did they also get the power to decide what the curriculum is? Because there's another item on here specific to Team Cup. Um, and the changes to that curriculum that were made by the board?
So I hate to disappoint you, but the, first of all, the minutes were, uh, actually not accurate. So that's number one. Number two, those courses that you're talking about are not on the agenda item to be approved. That does not require board approval. So the items that are on the agenda are under personnel. We're gonna put those up for a vote. So the ones you're referring to do not require a board vote.
So you're telling me that Dr. Hall, who prepared these minutes, inaccurately recorded the fact that the members of the Student Life and Program Committee rejected specifically, uh, continuing education?
I will tell you that-
Because I, I believe that there were communications made to people outside of this board, um, that are overballed.
So I'm just gonna interject in terms of talking about individual staff members and what they may or may not have done in any evaluation. I advise you to steer away from that. Certainly, you can talk about the process and whatnot, but talking about individual staff members' conduct or criticism or accolades should be avoided.
I, I, I guess I will note that the author on the minutes was a specific staff member.
Okay. Well, part of that process was not followed. And regardless though, those courses are happening. So teachers are taking those courses that you're referencing and the board does not have to vote on those.
I understand that the board doesn't have to vote on them, but apparently the board never had to vote on them because the committee was doing work behind the scenes without getting approval of the board. And that's the part that concerns me. To me, that seems like you're directing staff and that would be an ethical violation.
So everything we do because of the scrutiny that we're under is cleared by Board Counsel. So Board Counsel is where everything that goes on. And so we're not out of any, none of the stuff that you're talking about is accurate. Thank you though. Appreciate that.
Again, I didn't write it in minutes. This isn't, I'm not accusing, like, I am, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay. Anyone else have any comments? All right. We'll take a little call. Ms. Gray? Dr. Halfburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Callog?
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Roelke?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Bong?
Yes.
And Mrs. Santagl?
Yes.
There is one who has graduated two years ago from the university now and is a senior. And I had a question. I was looking through some of the bylaws, specifically P sixty-two-twenty, which is the budget prep bylaw. And it looked like there was a rather substantial change, which was the, uh, board, it was the removal of the line that said the board shall also provide for community input during the budget development process. It looks like that was struck twice from the policy. And there was mention about inspection. It looks like that language was preserved. But to me, inspection is likely substantially given from input. So I was very curious as to why that was done. And the other part was the first strike in the document, which was, um, so it was, let's see, "The annual budget is a financial plan for the effectuation of the educational plan for the district." The following continuation of that sentence was struck. "Its preparation is therefore one of the most important functions performed by the Board of Education." So I was curious why the board's thinking is that the creation or preparation of the budget is not one of the most important functions, if not the most important function of the board? And because to me, it seems like all of your goals and targets, you, the budget is the vehicle by which those are achieved. So to me, it seems like that is the most important thing that you guys are doing because that's how you're likely going to accomplish many, if not all, of your goals. And the other question I had was on another bylaw, which was in terms of disruption. I think it was fifty-five-sixty. The second paragraph, it listed out what the definition of a disruptive student was. It seemed three of the four criteria there were rather subjective. The only one that seemed evident or empirical based was, uh, the pattern of behavior. I think it was that, uh, was, uh, not in conformance to policy and or regulation, I believe. I'm probably paraphrasing a little bit there. And, but since the point I'm getting to there is, and these things often will lead to some sort of disciplinary action. So as a parent, I would expect that you have quantifiable or fact-based reasons as to why a disciplinary action is being taken as opposed to the rather subjective language that's in the policy itself. So my ask is to go back into that paragraph, see if it could be tightened up so that you're actually making decisions based off of factual, evidence-based reasons and not just really relying upon subjective analysis. Thank you.
Email, um, with four days to post. And I don't read my board email every single day. And so I didn't know it, didn't know it was coming up. And so I wasn't looking for it. Um, I'm not happy with what has been listed. And, um, I think those are all really great and important goals that are there. There's no question. I have no problem with them. But I have a problem with some of the ways that I have been ignored or, um, actually attacked by other board members. And that there's a lack of, there's really a lack of, of expertise that I am aware of in creating district goals. And so there's some things in here about expertise and about, um, uh, communication that I feel isn't really happening. There was no communication with the returning board members to me, um, for example, the president, um, or some of the other, uh, board members about how, how the boards are run or anything like that. No one, no one had any interest in speaking to me pretty much about anything except a couple of other people. Um, and I appreciate that they did. And I, I really feel like the board, this is really not, these are really not goals. These are like the way we should be towards each other. And I do think that we generally are very respectful towards each other during the meeting. And, um, and we try to, to continue with this. But I do feel as though these, these are not really goals. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on the action item?
I would just like to note that, um, typically, the way this has happened in the other years that I've been on the board is that the board develops visionary goals and then the district goals follow from that. So this process has been, um, very different for me. And, and I will agree with, um, some of the commentary that these are lovely goals, but I, I'm not sure that they are, um, up to the task. Okay. Anyone else? Sample?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, the district goals are much better, so I will be approving them. Um, so thank you to the editors for district goals. Um, but I also still volunteer to help edit things, but no one ever gets back to me. On the board goals, however, um, I wish that we could discuss as a board what the goals are, that we could discuss the input, and again, that didn't happen, so I won't be approving the board goals.
Okay. Anyone else? Did you write their name and municipality on the, uh?
We did.
You did? Okay, very good.
Okay, Madam President and also the rest of the board, Matt Call. Longtime resident here. I live in Flemington, uh, Raritan Township. Uh, two kids, one is a senior now. My, my elder one's graduated. And I have two still to come, so four children coming through Central. Uh, I come today representing, uh, two hundred and forty-five youth athletes in the area and fifty-five coaches. And I'm the lead representative for Central Youth Football. Um, looking to, you know, the strategic plan that you've mentioned. Uh, we also submitted the email on the, on the line as well with all our detailed supporting. Uh, we're privy to some information around a multi-field expansion project potential here at Central. We one hundred percent are endorsing this initiative. We need the continued growth for the athletics in the community as well. Um, and we feel, you know, we have some state-of-the-art areas, but we're very much behind. Given other, when you go into other schools to see where they are, what their complexes and things like that. Uh, so we're asking today to be a part of that strategic five-year initiative. We would like to support that, to continue that. And also, if there is a subcommittee that would, uh, kick off the initiative to study further details of that expansion project, we would like to be part of that as well. Um, the reason behind it, it's not just about, you know, football fields for the kids. It's so much bigger than that, getting the kids out playing athletics. It brings the community together. Um, you know, I, I've heard a lot of, you know, and I've coached a lot of the, the board's kids here as well too. But, and I've heard a lot of stress around mental health and things like that. But, um, activities, getting the kids out, bringing the communities together. Uh, we see progress here. We know what it's like, so we want to continue that. Um, we have really grown our program. You heard the numbers are reported out. We've started very much, very small. And Casey Ransome came in and he's been very pivotal with the youth organization, growing our numbers, uh, bringing us to a standard that we are. But now we are, you know, if I just talk about expenses, if we charge two hundred and fifty dollars a kid, um, basically, we're paying more than half of their registration fees just to run diesel generators, blowing fumes out in the wind and, and all the different things that we have to go and, and copper our fields together just to host our kids. So I know these would be the high school multi-use fields with the long-term vision for me. Yes, I would love to be able to organize, to get on those fields, to run, uh, youth athletics as well. So thank you for your time and look forward to hearing back.
Goals are missing ideas of current twenty-four, twenty-five board goals. The current goals have a section titled Effectiveness, Preparation, Time Management, and Communication. I think it's important that I re, I emphasize that last component of communication. In the last paragraph of that section, it states, "The board will work towards more effective intra-board communications, including but not limited to productive and efficient committee structure and accessible exchanges of information." I'm assuming that the board leadership in previous years thought that communication among board members and committees needed to be improved upon. But now you have removed that stated goal. We have seen with this board this year that communication among board members and committees have been significantly curtailed. Current board goals include a section titled Building Trust. That section states, "The board will work to ensure that all members' voices are heard and considered through a process of honest and open communication and mutual respect." What once was the standard of open board communication during board meetings has been thoroughly undermined by this board in the form of a note, uh, of, of no board comments and limited board interaction before the public. So much so, at an earlier meeting this year on the record, that we have seen you, Madam President, storm out of the board meeting in protest of one of your, uh, colleagues who wanted simply to congratulate the students on a great job that he had done, uh, on a performance. Such conduct relies on the proposed board goal of open communication and mutual respect in which the proposed, uh, 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 goals, goals state. Model professionalism and respect in every interaction and will be mindful that individuals can disagree or still behave with civility. Why must we wait until the twenty-five, twenty-six board to begin modeling this behavior? I challenge you to begin tonight. The culture and environment of a board of education should be a model for students, staff, and parents. We can and we must do better now. Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Cohen, Raritan Township. Uh, I too want to echo the sentiments and congratulate Dr. Hastings on a phenomenal job with our, uh, with Central's, uh, academy program. I think it's stellar. I'm super stoked to see the growth of the program. And I appreciate the administration on the board's support of continuing to encourage our students to advance and excel in the ways we expect at Hunter and Central. So thank you for that. And thank you to the students who came to speak about the richness of the programs and what it's done for them personally. It's absolutely amazing. Um, so tonight, I'm here before you to talk about, uh, the, the district goals. Uh, at the August eighteenth board event meeting, the board presented its rough goals without any specific measurements. We know that. We know that they were work in progress. We know that the outcomes are now displayed in the minutes and the agenda. Uh, and I'm glad to see that that work has moved forward. Uh, yet the goals appear to be more compliance-based and visionary or aspirational against Central's mission statement. And I applaud Dr. Cangelosi-Hade's comment about that this isn't just where the work ends, that there's deeper, richer work that's going to occur beneath the goals that are listed. The concerns I have, and, and I know this work will be done because I can trust the administration at Central to take care of this, but there were some gaps that I just want to elevate and bring forward so that we make sure that this good work continues. There were no real serious goals to address the following. There's not one goal or measure focused on supporting Central staff or staff development. I think that's a significant miss. If we don't develop the staff, and it may be inherently embedded in the wording and the construct of the goals, and I know that work will continue because we see PD and other things on the agendas, but not to have it as a district goal, I think is a miss. Uh, nothing around expanding opportunities for professional development for the faculty and staff focused on instructional practices and student needs. Uh, I did also not see one goal or measure focused around ensuring equitable access to high-quality education and support services for the diverse student population that continues to grow and expand across our community, addressing the various needs of Central's diverse learning populations and measures to support those. This includes- This includes Central's special education students, our marginalized communities, and more specifically our Latino community, given the significant reduction and in some cases elimination of title funding for the coming year. Uh, nor is there any goal around fostering sort of a more inclusive school community. There's elements of student voice, but not necessarily the inclusiveness of the larger community.
What we're doing, and I'm sure, um, every staff member, I, I think every board member would say the same thing, so thank you so much for being here. Um, okay. The game should reflect the same civility, respect, and constructive dialogue that we want our students to demonstrate in their own lives. I hope we all keep this in mind and in our forefront as we move through tonight's agenda and in any future meetings. And Bronwyn, I have right to report in advance, so I had a sneak peek, I'm very excited and I hope I didn't step on your toes in anything that I said tonight. So I'll hand it over to you.
Do you want to come up? Phillip, come on up. So I want to congratulate seniors Bronwyn and Philip Zantif on being named semifinalists in the twenty-twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Competition. Out of one point three million juniors that took PSAT last year, which is a qualifier for the National Merit Scholarship Competition, there are two of approximately sixteen thousand students nationwide to be named semifinalists. The nationwide pool of semifinalists, representing less than one percent of U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. The number of semifinalists in a state is proportional to the state's percentage of the national total of graduating seniors. Semifinalists will be notified in February if they advance to the finalist level and have the opportunity to earn National Merit Scholarships for twenty-five hundred dollars or corporate or college-sponsored scholarships. And on top of, and I got to say on a side, on top of Strong Scholarship, Bronwyn and Phillip are two of the genuinely nicest people that we have here and are influential members of our school community. They are. So I'm proud as a principal to introduce them to you as National Merit semifinalists. Bronwyn and Sabine.
The culture we want in our schools, one where disagreement is met with vilification, or inclusion and belonging only extended to those who think alike. Last year during our superintendent search, we held a student focus group. One of the strongest messages we heard from students was the desire for diversity of thought. Clearly we have work to do. There is a growing intolerance for differing viewpoints that runs counter to everything we're trying to build. We are in election season. Let's hold ourselves to a higher standard. All too often we see community members tearing others down, attacking individuals with false allegations and unsubstantiated claims. Isn't courageous, it's destructive. It doesn't tell us anything meaningful about the target, it tells us everything about the person making the accusation. Let's encourage public discourse that is rooted in ideas, not insults. We still have work to do, we can do better, and I hope and pray we do. With that said, last month the board was forced to adjourn into recess due to the lack of decorum during public comment. Individuals who interrupt others become aggressive or loud or fail to adhere to the public, to proper decorum, will be asked to leave the meeting. Thank you. So with that, I will open up the first public session. Please be reminded that this is for only action items on the agenda. If, if you start talking about something that's not an action item, you're going to have to wait until the final session. All right? So with... Is everyone, is everyone open with three minutes because we have quite a few people? Yeah, everyone's people are up there. All right. All right, so just say, say your name and your municipality. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Sager. I live in Raritan Township, and I'm here tonight to talk about the academies that you have going on. I am the proud parent of two hundred of Central graduates, um, one who is in Rombele, or Rombelee, um, he's in, uh, Raritan Valley Community College studying nursing, and another who's at the University of Georgia. And I'm just here tonight to say that the decisions that the board and the administration make have a lasting impact. And let me tell you what I mean. When I taught at Central, it was in two thousand and one, a long time ago, um, at that time that we did not allow freshmen to take AP classes. My son, who is now going to University of Georgia, was able to go there with sixty credits. That is not only a savings to the family, it's a testament to the education that he received here at Central. So I'm incredibly proud because the decisions that we make as a board, as a community, and as a staff have a lasting impact. So I just wanted to say it's great to see more academies going forward, and thank you so much for the work being done to move our students forward because that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Edmund McLaughlin, I'm from Delaware Township. I parted my outburst, I apologize for that earlier. I surprised myself even. I don't know if this is an action item on the agenda, but this is an item on the agenda. I have a, a request with respect to the public comments themselves. I know that, that, uh, conventionally we have a thirty-minute public comment period. I think that there are a lot of folks, uh, here this evening that would like to make comments. I know that the board values input from parents and from the community, so, um, I would respectfully, uh, ask if you could extend the, uh, the thirty-minute period and, uh, allow folks to have, uh, the opportunity to, to, uh, to, uh, make their public comments, uh, even if it goes over the last, even if it goes over thirty minutes. Uh, as Aunt Angela already called just a few years ago, uh, that yourself and then sort of your church group, uh, attended a meeting and, um...
So, Mr. McLaughlin, I'm sorry.
I think I have three minutes, right?
Yeah, but again, it's not an action item, so if you want to make that quick request, but this is going beyond that.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is that you were, your group was extended the courtesy. I think you had about an hour and a half of commentary.
Right, so we will take that into consideration.
So I'm asking for the same consideration. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Rachel White, Raritan Township. I was disappointed in the Board of Education for not answering my email from September fourth, which was sent to the board president directly along with the full board. I would appreciate it if the board attorney would explain tonight how the taxpayers are supposed to communicate with the board if they refuse to respond at meetings and also refuse to respond to official correspondence. How can the board serve the community if they don't even speak to its constituents? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi all, my name is Callie Pelletan. I started exploring my love for film my freshman year in TV one, and since then I've taken TV two, and I'm scheduled for an independent study this upcoming spring semester. The curriculum of Central Broadcast Program is purposefully curated so that the projects reflect real-world, industry-specific challenges. This curriculum, combined with the professional studio-level equipment provided to students, effectively prepares them for the field. This program requires students to be well-rounded, teaching them all parts of pre-production, production, and post-production, while also providing out-of-school opportunities to further our experience. This is a phenomenal program filled with staff that only want to see you succeed. I'd like to give a special shout-out to my film teacher, Mr. Lazovic, who does a phenomenal job of pushing us to be our best selves in our craft. Thank you very much.
So as we've been engaging with, uh, expanding and broadening our magnet programs, um, we started to think about as a magnet program committee and as a supervisor team, the kind of students that theoretically would be successful in these programs, and also historically for the classes that have been running, the students that achieved the most success, kind of what were their characteristics? Now, our classes are open to everybody, but when you start to look at, especially in these three academies, architectural design, biomedical science, computer science, about who the academy may be ideal for, there's a lot of common themes here. So asking why and how, being able to think analytically and creatively, being able to visualize, there's a lot of hands-on, design-thinking, problem-solving, solutions-oriented curriculums here. For people that may be interested to be either future architects or aspiring doctors or future software engineers. And that pattern continues in our other three academies, engineering, media, communications, and robotics. Um, you have students that are hands-on learners, they enjoy storytelling, being behind the microphone, uh, coding, mechanics, though the creative piece is also there as well. So even though you're taking six different academies, or a student's taking one of the six different academies, um, there's still a lot of overlap between the kinds of skills that they're going to be, um, expected to and present to have. So, um, I just wanted, before I go on to the next slide, just, I want to bring up two more people. Uh, one person representing the robotics academy and one person representing our biomedical sciences academy. So, that's your Sebastian.
Hi, my name is Sebastian and I'm an inspiring doctor who has been in the biomedical program for three years. This program has given me opportunities that I wouldn't have had if I took the normal curriculum, the school gives. I have participated in countless dissections and on top of that, I've, I've learned major in-depth in human anatomy. I've worked on case studies that have allowed me to see how doctors think and what my future health careers might look like. Particip, I also participated in a field trip to Rutgers Medical School that gave me a chance to see cadavers for the very first time, which is something mostly college students would get to do. Overall, this program is an opportunity I'm very grateful for, and it has helped me a lot in discovering my career in being a doctor.
Hello, my name is Thatcher Wright, and over the past three years I was a part of the robotics magnet program at Hunterdale and Central. Um, I got an amazing experience with opportunities to channel my creativity into gratifying robotics projects that involves career skills such as, but not limited to, uh, manufacturing with a CNC machine, uh, computer-assisted design or CAD, uh, using machine shop tools, programming, welding, and much, much more. These hands-on opportunities were unbelievably important for my goals as I go forward and continue my education in robotics and automation. I am very grateful to the program and to teachers like Mr. Mastroprietro, who showed me what I could really do in the field and all of the different things that would be important as I pursue my career. Thank you.
To speak about kind of their cohesive pathway and their supportive peer-coach work, I want to bring up, uh, two of those speakers, one of them representing the engineering academy and one representing the architectural design academy. Um, so, me, Reed, and Ryan.
My name's Ryan, as he said. Um, I personally, um, have experienced the engineering program. So my freshman year I did TED, and then last year I took Engineering One, and this year I'm in honors engineering. Um, one thing that I really want to speak about is, um, specifically one of the teachers who leads the engineering program, Mr. Brokaw. Um, while he's only one of the teachers in this department, um, he formerly worked at Lockheed Martin, working on satellites, so he has a, like, leading, like, experience, you know? He knows what he's doing. Um, and I just think that that really, you know, allows students to be pushed and learn, um, skills that are necessary, um, in the actual field, not just, you know, you need to learn this because it's on the curriculum, but this is going to help you later down the line in college and in the real world. Um, personally, a lot of my friends, um, went to college already, um, some of them are currently in college, and some of them speak to me about what they're learning, and a lot of it is what I'm learning in class. Um, personally, Mr. Brokaw has pushed me to even further than I thought I could be pushed and able to achieve things that, to be honest, I never realized were possible from a high school student. So I just think that that's really just the strength of this program. And that's all I have to say.
My name is Reed Leiler, and I am part of the architectural design academy magnet program here at Hunterdale and Central. So far, the hands-on experience and engaging projects I have worked on have not only made learning fun, but have opened my eyes to the possibilities that the world of architecture offers. I began participating in this program last year, and I've already gained so much knowledge from both my peers and my mentor, Mrs. Smith, who are all equally excited about creativity and design. Each project we tackle is more than an assignment. It is an opportunity to explore not only the study of architecture, but each of our unique perspectives as high school students. We are not just learning to draw and design, but to think critically, solve problems, and communicate our ideas effectively. Being a part of this program has been an incredible journey so far, and we look forward to developing new skills to help give us a head start as we begin our future careers in the professional world. Thank you.
Listen, it's meant to be, uh, we're going to have security, ask you to leave.
I have one second, I have one second.
You're going to leave, I'm sorry.
Please instead place the interest of the high school students over your own material interests.
If you're not going to follow the process, you need to leave. I'm just going to tell everybody now, if you're going to go over your time, you're going to be asked to leave. It's not fair to everyone else that adheres to the rules.